The meeting in order, I was giving the IT Department another moment to get set into place. First item, welcome to tonight's city council work session. The first item on the agenda is budget discussions. This is going to be pertaining to golf and public works. So Jill, do you want to go ahead and give an intro to this? And I don't know if you're going to give the presentation for those departments or if the department heads are going to give those presentations.
They will give their own presentations, but I just want to say we're kind of doing this a little different this year. We had hoped to project these to your iPads. We ran out of time. Hopefully, we can do that in the future. So tonight, you'll just have to look on the large screens. And we're going to start with golf grounds.
Give you all a minute to look at it or we can immediately start discussions if you need to discuss or look at what's on there.
Go ahead and just walk us through it, Jeff, if you don't mind.
All right. Okay, and the first, the first item that would be the training, schooling, travel. You know, I got $500 in there and that's for my pesticide and GCA classes I have to take for research, my pesticide license. Have nothing in the professional services. The general supplies is where I buy everything, all my chemicals and, you know, anything that has to do with the maintenance needs of the golf course is where this comes out of. And I think, and I'm asking for 90,000 on that because I need to build some additional tee boxes or redo some additional tee boxes, at least three or four next year alone. I have just like general maintenance for like buildings. I don't know if you guys have ever been out to the maintenance shop, but you know, the bathrooms, that whole area needs to be worked with. It's just not a very pleasant place, place to go into and along with, with the office that I've currently at. I mean, there's rats running through the ceiling and it's just not, it's not a sanitary place to be. I know most time I spend my time outside on the course itself, but.
Where is that building? Is that by the cart?
Yes, adjacent to the cart barn. The uniforms, it's been a couple of years now since.
Can I, back up just a minute so that I'm reading this correctly? I'm looking under general maintenance again. So the budget this year is 15,000 and you're asking for 18.5 next year? Is that what the difference is?
Well, 18.5 is what this year, the 15 is what came out and went through building the pump station and probably some of the other bathroom upgrades.
The general maintenance was 15,000?
Yes.
So the general maintenance budget is, just making sure I'm reading the spreadsheet correctly. You're asking for an additional $3,500 in general maintenance?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead, Jeff.
Equipment, vehicle and repair. I had 25 last year in the golf maintenance equipment. We are coming up to our last year of lease on there, so I think I recommend that we stay at that. And also, we are on our second year of starting on the golf carts themselves. So I put a little additional money in there just for the golf carts to replace any tow bars or anything that damage is due there. Just, I think, Bobby, that's a two-year warranty on those?
Yes.
So we go, we will be coming out of warranty on some, you know, some of those items on As far as uniforms, like it's been a couple of years since, since we bought uniforms, I have added one additional person this year, hopefully in the next week or so that person will be starting. So we'll have to buy uniforms for, for everybody out there upgrading uniforms. The purchases, vehicle and equipment. If you go down to, what's the 38 horsepower compact tractor for the soil reliever? I'm suggesting we, we buy a soil reliever and a compact tractor, knowing that the drainage situation that we do currently have on the greens, this will not fix everything, but at least you will be able to penetrate about 10 inches, eight to 10 inches into the soil to fracture that soil and at least let some air and get a better root structure for the greens to grow. And, you know, that will help out with some of the surface water we have and the subsurface, get some drainage through, so we can utilize the nutrients correctly. Now, currently, we, we farm that out. It's usually $3,000 for every time that somebody comes in and does that. We only usually go about twice a year, but in the situation we have, I think it would be beneficial if we did it at least once a month or four or five times within that year, especially during the growing season, coming out of dormancy and going into dormancy. So have the best greens possible. So that would be my first, first two. That's kind of almost like a package type deal. Then we also put a dump trailer in. You know, we currently don't have an ice machine or any kind of water machines within the facility that we have and, and a truck for the, for maintenance and the pro shop I think that pretty much wraps up what, what stuff that we have on our list this year.
Okay, questions for Jeff, counsel? Or Jill?
One of you, I guess Jill shows the, I was looking at the overall numbers and it shows a deduction of about $4,000 from last year's budget.
Mm-hmm.
Looking back, it's showing a $50,000 savings in employee medical insurance. How is that being achieved?
Um, the numbers honestly, as of the time I put these in, which was maybe the first week in June, they're just, they, I just have, what is year-to-date and based on that, they're, they just are under budget from what we budgeted. And I think we really kind of budgeted that number high for 17.
Gotcha.
But we still have, you know, all of June, July, August and September to go, but if you take the number and annualize it and divide it by eight and multiply it by 12, that's kind of how I figured the medical insurance. Because, you know, one month may be a lot less and the next month may be a lot higher. So that's really the only best way to do that.
I also noted that. Robert, a good catch on that. I was trying to find, you found it before me, how we had a reduction in expenses forecast. And just counsel, so you know, I know you've probably looked at these numbers already. If you would like to know where we're at on income year-to-date, if you compare it to last year, we are right at $15,000 above the same point last year, which is excellent. And we are also at 75% to budget and we're only, this is reported as two-thirds of the way through the year. So it looks like we're trending higher to budget. And I'd also say that's probably a good sign since we're coming into the golfing months. I mean, this was in May. I mean, it's hot in June, July and August, but what's our business like, Jeff, in June, July, August, September? I mean, it's, it's the time of year to play golf, but do we, do we get hit by the heat too?
You get hit by the heat, but I think you also, you know, what I've noticed, you see a lot more people in the morning or later in the afternoons. You know, that heat in the middle of the day kind of keeps some of them away. But I think overall, it is, you know, it does slack up a little bit when it's 100 degrees outside, so.
Also, you just came out of tournament season too.
Came out of tournament season as well, yeah. And we will probably not be back into tournament season until the start of the fiscal year, right? Probably around October. September's still pretty hot. You're probably looking at October before, before you get those fall tournaments. I see Bobby nodding, yes?
Every Sunday in October is already above.
Yeah, okay. Better to be above the, the projections. So I guess I'd also be remiss, though, if I didn't make the comment on the medical insurance that, you know, if, if the plan is to shift some of the cost to the employees, I really want to know if that's somehow put into this number.
It's not.
It's based on our current insurance.
That's based on what we have now. That's right.
Okay, all right. That was a hard question for me to ask, but I had to ask it, Jill. Any other questions for Jeff? Are you guys seeing any need to change? By the way, compliments you on bringing this to us to be discussed in a, in a public meeting, to look at these numbers and to get through this rather rapidly. Any showstoppers in here?
I had some questions about the golf, golf club repair, I mean, the repairs to the pro shop. I don't know if that's something we want to address while we're looking at their budget or.
I think we might. Do you want to bring it up, Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, my question is, you know, we've kicked around some, some pretty expensive, extensive repairs, you know, 500,000 to ballpark to redo, redo the facade of that building. And I'm just wondering at what point do we say 500,000 is too much for a temporary Band-Aid and just, I mean, I hate to spend a substantial amount of money, but 500,000 just to, just to kind of bridge the gap is an awful lot. And I'm wondering what kind of price we think we'd be looking at to start over and just address the whole thing.
Well, Jimmy, if, if I had a question about banking to the council, I would address it to you. And Councilman Brown is our resident contractor. And so I'd like to, I know he has actually a pretty strong opinion about it and I'd like to, if I can redirect that question or comment to him.
Right away.
And also.
I don't know if I say I have a strong opinion, I have an opinion.
I believe you have a strong opinion, the way I've read it. And I, and I have an opinion about just the clubhouse and the expectations as well, but I'll let Councilman Brown share his opinion.
Yeah, I mean, to me, putting 500, 400, you know, maybe 300,000 in that building is not, it's not going to be what we want it to be if we want to achieve, you know, a nicer clubhouse. To me, I think you do the minimal repair necessary to make it safe, ADA compliant, you know, you can leave those windows. The windows, in my opinion, aren't the issue. It's the flashing and the way the stucco is installed around it. Going to remove the rock, put a new vapor barrier around the entire building, put a new hardy plank, paint it all, make it look pretty and do some minimal upgrades inside the clubhouse, you know, to update it, but to expand anything on that building or replace windows or try to make that building more energy efficient and more structurally sound, in my opinion, is not a good use of taxpayer money.
When you say not make it more structurally sound, what about the concrete on the back porch?
Well, you've got to address that. I'm just talking about, in that report earlier, it was talking about strapping the rafters to the top plate and, you know, why you've got it opened up, but I don't see the benefit on that building.
Anybody else have an opinion or want to comment on that? I'd like to see us move, move this along. I mean, that was a good time to have a quick discussion on it. Does anybody have a differing opinion? Does anybody want to go spend, you know?
Robert, do we have any idea of what it would cost to do what you're talking about?
You know, throw a number out there. I would say, there again, depending on what all you want to do inside, but you could spend 150,000, you know, get the outside and inside, I think, back in usable shape.
With what is the long-term plan for the golf course and the clubhouse? I mean, at some point, we're doing minimal repairs now, at some point, we're going to want to do something different, I would imagine. So with what being short-term repairs now, with what is the long-term plan for the golf course?
I, I want to try to take a stab at that, Jay. I think that I would like to see some upgrades in the future, whether that be a year or two down the road. I don't know, one year, two year, five-year plan. But I honestly, and Robert, back me up on this, I believe this was your opinion, I, I don't see the return on investment in putting an awful lot of money into that clubhouse. And Bobby, I don't mean to step on your toes, but I don't know if the neighborhood would support something, maybe even call it higher-end. Maybe they'll support higher-end to a degree, but we're not going to supplant Lakewood Golf Club. I don't think we're even going to supplant necessarily Rock Creek as a golf club and what they try to do there for dinner. By the way, their restaurant is struggling to stay open, I believe, mightily. And so while I would love to say that that's going to be a venue that people want to hang out and stick around until, you know, seven or eight, nine o'clock at night, I don't know, Bobby, what do you think? What do you see? Do you think that the neighborhood would support that?
Well, they haven't supported it in the past as far as nighttime restaurant activities like that. There are some afternoons when we have league player tournaments, it's a nice social hour out there and it is nice, very pleasant sitting on the deck.
But we can make it like a really nice grill area, a nice, more casual, and that's what I'm thinking as well. I think that we, I think that there's some money left on the table out there as far as, I mean, I'll be, I think it's, it's a bargain. I think it's a real bargain out there. If you haven't gone out there and eaten and you want a good meal at a really fair price, go out there to Quail Creek and eat because they do a really good job. And I'd be willing to pay a little more, Bobby, but would your clientele be willing to pay more?
Well, I think they would a little bit. We're still underpriced on food and beverage. We're definitely low. When you go, the cost of a beer is $2. Most other facilities are $3 and $3.50.
Can you go, let me ask you that point blankly. Could you go to $3 and $3.50 on a beer right now?
I think 2.50 would be acceptable, but yeah.
Is Robert going to talk about that?
Yes, I think we need to. I mean, you can go to Waffle House or McDonald's.
But that's my point. My point is you can go that, you might can go to 2.50, but I don't think you can go to that 3.50. I don't know that you can go to that price point there at Quail Creek.
No.
And it pains me to say that, but I don't think you can.
There is some revenue on just adding a little bit of percentage here and there that would be acceptable.
Do you need council approval to change menu prices out there, though?
From the past, yes.
We give you the authority.
When I first came to work here, it was not, but that was taken away.
We can grant, you have the authority. That's a policy. We can grant.
I've asked in the past just to do specials and things on Thursday or during the week and I was told the council needed to approve all fee raises.
Well, I read an attorney general's opinion today on policy and that sounds like a policy decision and we can empower the supervisor to make that.
Well, a lot of, a lot of golf courses run specials on slow days and they take the initiative to run them as they see needed. In competition with Rock Creek, Timber Creek, Lake Forest, Glen Lakes, they run those a lot and we do not. And it's, my hand's just kind of been tied on that. I would love to. I think we need to. There's slow days Monday and Thursday afternoon. We could run a $20 cart fee and increase rounds. That cart, instead of sitting there, it'd be rented.
We gave you the authority. Would you do it?
Absolutely.
We've seen a lot of phone calls.
I think the clubhouse does need upgrading. Of course, I would like to see it redone and have a new Taj Mahal, but we don't have to have TPC with the woodlands. But in building, I also have recommended that we look at possibly making the cart barn and moving it over to where the clubhouse is to make things more efficient. Instead of having a cart attendant come in at 5:00 in the morning and trailer carts across the street, they're right there, open the door, one attendant can come in and open the clubhouse and, and start the day's operation unless it was a tournament.
Where would you put that cart barn?
We have plenty of room over there beside the parking lot. You have the area where the chipping green is. You have west, the south side of the building. There's plenty of room.
I, I would disagree with you, Bobby. Aesthetically, I, I don't like, I wouldn't want, want to look at the cart barn as I'm coming up to play golf.
Well, if you dress, dress it up.
Yeah, if I'm sitting out there on the deck enjoying an ice cold iced tea, I would not want to look at the cart barn.
That's true.
We're just talking fancy world.
Yeah. I don't, I don't even drink tea.
And to digress back to the building, you know, what to do to the building, the other reason behind my thinking is, you know, we're looking at 20, 24 million, whatever number you want to look at for infrastructure improvements, you know, some things got to take priority and, you know, get the clubhouse fixed up and, you know, tweak it a little bit inside and we got to rock on down the road until we figure out.
The, the inside wall seemed to be fine and repairing the pro shop, getting the pro shop back up, I agree, would be minimal. The back deck does concern me. Lance has some great ideas about forming a concrete porch, doing away with the wooden deck and getting things back in, in good structure. I would like to see the porch expanded. It would bring in about 1,400 to 1,500 square feet of inside, not necessarily dining, but get people out of the weather. When we have a tournament, we pitched a huge tent this year and the tent was great and it was well-received by FIF.
Thanks, sir. Rock star.
But the, you remember the tent at the FIF tournament and the other tournaments we had, it was a huge success. And so I have in my capital purchases and to buy a tent and tables and chairs to have outside until we get through this and we weather the storm and get back operational. But that was a huge hit. So I would like to see that done, you know, moving the cart barn, yeah, that would just be, I think it would add to the facility, but.
Yeah, I know it's inconvenient. And I've been that guy that walked back across the street before you could, could hitch them together and I made that trip 120 times a day in the morning and evening for a course.
It's wear and tear on the cart battery that has to tow the carts back over there.
It is. But if you're going to try to build a nice facility, I bet you're putting that barn over there.
Not so great note, but it needs to be discussed. When we do these repairs, you're going to have to bring in the ADA compliance that we're concerned about.
Right.
That's going to have to be dealt with and that's going to be an expense that the engineers have addressed and then knows about it, but in those repairs and spending that money, you got to be compliant.
Counsel, give us, give some direction. Let's, let's try to move this, this ball forward on repairs. And he needs to get back in his pro shop and, go ahead, Lynn, I know you've been sort of, come up, come up front if you will, so people can hear you. Grab that.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to add to what the fellows are saying. I've had golf course business experience and that's one of the reasons why the mayor asked me to work with Bobby and Jeff on the golf course to see what we can do. I've managed a golf course, helped to buy one. I am astounded at the business that Quail Creek has. When other courses, you understand, we're all fighting for the same market and other courses are suffering for rounds of play. This course is getting run over and used more than any course I've seen in the last 10 years, literally. Bear that in mind when you talk about what to do in the facilities. The other thing, I'm a little concerned when you talk about the neighborhood supporting. I'm not sure what you mean by the neighborhood.
Well, I, just what I said, are they going to go there as you're going to your dinner venue?
Are you talking Quail Creek neighborhood?
Yeah, that and the surrounding.
Interesting, okay. Interesting enough, last, was it March, April, I asked Bobby to run some numbers for me and he didn't know why I was asking for it. I wanted to see where the business was coming from. And our business at that course is divided only one-third Quail Creek residents. Two-thirds of the business at that course are from players, from other addresses in Fairhope and outside the city limits and other cities. Two-thirds of the business. And, you know, Quail Creek residents can come and go at will. They can always go home real quick, but once you've captured that outside of Quail Creek neighborhood business, you want to keep them there.
In, in my experiences out there, and I've spent quite a bit of time out there, is that when people, they will, they'll even, they'll come in for breakfast, they will enjoy lunch and they'll, you know, sit around for a drink after the round. We have so many restaurants in this area, even if you're a visitor, you know, chances are you're going to leave the property and go to another restaurant. You're going to go home and get cleaned up and go out to dinner if you're, if you're a vacationer here. I'm just a little concerned that the golfers are going to stick around and have dinner and if they don't, then you are back to the neighborhood supporting it.
They're not going to stay for dinner and I think Bobby knows that and I don't think that's the objective. The only time I think you're doing dinner at this point is when you had nine and dine and, and, you know, very specific events.
Then if you, if you're only talking the breakfast and the lunch crowd, then, then a very nice golf club type setting would suffice, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then maybe you and I are thinking the same thing and not realizing.
Yep, could be.
Okay. All right, thank you, Lynn. Any direction on the repairs that we can go forward with?
I mean, what do y'all, y'all think it's worth putting 500,000 into it?
No, I don't. Not 500.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, Jimmy. I don't know that it is, but I think we need to get on whatever the structural repairs out there, porch, the deck, get them back in the pro shop as soon as we can.
Yeah, I'm ready to put a resolution on the agenda, so I'd like some, some real specific direction as to what I want to do, if you're ready. And if not, we'll wait till next meeting and see if we're ready.
I'd like to see us just do the least expensive repairs that get by that we could and then start thinking longer term about more major overhaul if it's warranted.
Yeah, Bobby, didn't we talk about this in the, maybe last meeting or two meetings ago, about, about ways to change up the inside of the clubhouse to make it more efficient?
Right. One of the things that Mayor Wilson addressed on her visits out there was to open it up and make it a little more where the pro shop is more open to the dining facility, a little easier to run from a snack bar standpoint, instead of having a snack bar person in there all day that can leave and somebody can sell a Coke or a candy bar and still run the pro shop.
With that, I don't know exactly what sort of project that looks like, but is that something that could be done with some lower cost to make it at least more efficient without spending all the money?
I would defer to kind of the engineers that have been out there to see the structure. What's load bearing in a wall inside internally? The clubhouse had its original structure and then it was added on to, you know, the porch was wrapped in. So I'm not sure exactly how it would work, but I would say, yes, you could.
Is that something you would like, Bobby? In 40 years, I've never seen anybody go from the pro shop to the kitchen, other than you, out of necessity. I've never seen somebody attending the, the pro shop, run into the kitchen and serve food.
Well, in the pro shop in its present state, if the pro shop were open, yeah, you can't. You have to have an attendant.
Not in any club in my life.
Yeah, well, there's been a few, but it's just, it comes down to operational and saving money on payroll. If you want it run efficiently like that and save on that, I think it's good to have an attendant in there all the time.
That's what I wanted to hear.
I do. But you could open it up. I'd like to just.
What I wanted to hear, that's what I was expecting to hear.
I would like to see that closed in on that porch, just to have for people and for safety getting out of the weather. I'd like to see that enclosed.
What about if we expanded the.
Hang on, Jack. Back, back to his point.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
What happened is when you expand that porch and you're putting new windows in that porch and the city of Fairbanks is going to require you to place all the windows in that clubhouse, you're going to have to be brought up to code. So that's where, when you started closing and making more heat and cooled spaces where the project jumps in cost. So if you leave all existing windows and walls where they are, you can put new sheeting and, and, you know, siding on the outside, but as soon as you start moving next year walls and placing new windows and a portion of it.
Good, so I can get my tent and chairs then.
You're opening up a can of worms.
While we have to do some structural repairs to the concrete in the back though, could we go ahead and expand that without enclosing it?
We can cover it.
With a plan to future expansion, just the concrete, would that, would that benefit you? And then you're getting rid of the wooden deck as well, which is, needs repair. It's in disrepair, so if.
Yeah, another concept I like, if we can't do that, would be a huge open breezeway that's roofed with maybe ceiling fans, but it's open air. There needs to be more space for that and then we take care of the tent.
Yeah, have covered space.
Have covered space with an A-frame.
I was thinking covered space, expanding the, the concrete porch.
Yes.
And you might even construct it in such a way that, with the eye towards enclosing it later.
True. I've researched a lot of plans. You look at a lot of concepts of buildings around for golf operations and you see a lot of that. Have you ever been to Silicaga, to Farm Links, the rural area that.
No, I wish you would take me.
With the weather that we have would be great too, if we can't close it in. I just need space. As you know, when you have a big tournament like we have and FIF expanded to 160, 170 players and you have a double shotgun, you have to get them in out of the weather. There's no place to go at Quail Creek. You've got to get them inside. You've got to protect them from the elements. So I'd like to see some roof over their head for outdoor activities.
Can I propose and I get to take a straw poll, if we expanded the, the concrete, got rid of the wood deck, expanded the concrete, that would facilitate maybe a future enclosure and did the bare minimum of the repairs on the, on the existing exterior surfaces? And then, I don't know, maybe even put the roof over that concrete structure? Could I get support for that?
Yes.
Put that on the next agenda. I have a question. Put that up. Put that up.
Just thinking, thinking down the road in the future. Uh, is the fu, is the game plan for this in the future to basically tear the building down over a period of time and restart all over or to redesign this existing building to put what, what we want to, for the expansion?
Lance can help answer that. If he was here, the outside walls are to, they've got.
No, no, I, I understand the problem with this building. What I'm, what I'm asking is if, if the idea of, of the game plan was to go in over a fifteen-year period to re, redesign the existing building, not tear it down, not start all over again, just, or, but to redesign the existing building and, and, uh, add on to it to make the improvements you needed, just one, uh, thought process, well, whatever, whatever you did to it now would offset problems later on. For the, for, but if your idea is to tear the building down and start a brand-new building in a, you know, six, eight years, it would be kind of, uh, wouldn't be too wise to spend five hundred thousand dollars on improvements.
Or if you could do it in phases so that they're attached to each other and the model would be to improve it each time.
Yeah, I don't know if it's feasible to, uh, on, on, say, expand the existing building. I mean, you understand my point is, if, if you're gonna tear, the, the basic principle is if you're gonna tear it down, start all over again, you're looking well over a million and a half, you know, dollars to start to do that and to sink five hundred thousand into it now and then to, six years from now, tear it all out, tear it down. Kind of a wasted time. Whereas if we're gonna, if we can expand that building and have, uh, add-ons or additions to that to improve the interior and make more room, uh, it might not be such a, I mean, I'm, again, I don't have a dog in the hunt. I'm just asking the question more or less.
You do have a dog in the hunt, by the way.
Jack.
I think what I'm proposing is kind of leaves that open to that. And, and you said a hundred and fifty for what you were initially talking about. And I don't think the addition of concrete and maybe a little bit of roof, you know, it might add twenty-five thousand.
The other, the other thing is, it kind of plays into that, to what I'm saying is it gives you some time to think about what you wanna do in the future and get these repairs done on a minimal cost. And then if we do wanna expand it, we can add to, uh, put the money into it and through the expansions as time goes on.
Not a bad plan. We could have the concepts put together for the future.
Yeah, yeah. Before we, you know, pour that concrete, I think you should have an eye towards that. It, it needs to be an option. But once again, even if in the future, five years from now, we decided we didn't use that pad.
Right.
So what?
All right. Done with that?
Yep. Let's move on. Thank you, guys. Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Jeff.
Bobby needs to present his line item budget.
Thank you, sir. Let's see.
Oh, that was just half the golf budget.
That's right. Well, it looks like my staple's getting old on some of this. Kevin.
This is, uh, this is.
I took a little liberty through Jill, the curb at the last minute. I put these increases in here in percentages. I know Councilman Varell likes to see percentage. The only increase I had to request for next year in the two thousand eighteen for, is, is somebody on my staff to help do landscape around the clubhouse, be a part-time person. Um, Jeff is, has his hands full around the golf course and it, it's hard to keep everything looking good. This person also could help with minor maintenance around the building, some of the caulking and painting that needs to be done and fixing that, power washing, keeping the clubhouse at a suitable standard. Also the landscape around there, pulling weeds, mulching and things like that. And that was my request. Uh, I appreciate the, the, uh, budget that you just approved. That, that helped me out quite a bit. I was able to put some part-time people in positions that I needed for cart staff, uh, starters and marshals and also inside the clubhouse. So that would be the only request that I would have if that was, uh, accepted. The, uh, the, the next line items on payroll, taxes, retirement, medical, I have to defer to Jill on that, on those line items. So any questions on?
I've got a general question. And I appreciate the detail of having the two different to look at, but I think I'd kind of prefer to see it all in one budget just for the golf course. Is that, isn't that how it's presented when we look at the annual?
No, it's two different departments.
It's always two different?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Training and school, I, uh.
Let's go back to the golf clubhouse. I'm gonna go back to the salaries. Is that four hundred and seventeen thousand?
That's correct.
And then we had in two thousand seventeen, it was two hundred and thirteen.
That's the year to date.
That's year to date.
I'm sorry. Okay, year to date. So two thousand sixteen actually was two ninety-four. Where's the?
And the one thing you're missing would be the sheet that has all of the.
Boy, that's not a forty-seven percent increase though.
No, it, that, he's saying that's forty-seven percent of the budget.
Oh, okay. Percent of the budget, okay.
See that total budget block up there in the top?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Percent of the budget, okay. I got you. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, PGA merchandise show is critical to PGA professionals seeing what's new in the market, not only for equipment, but, uh, things that are needed in the golf operations. I have not been in five years and I'd like to attend the PGA merchandise show down in Orlando. Of course, that expenses, traveling, gas and staying down there for four days. Uh, I'd like to explain the Alabama Northwest Florida PGA section, uh, meeting is, is an annual meeting that I attend every year and I get my recertification points out of that. So that's only one time a year. Uh, professional services, I'm not sure what might be in that. I'd have to ask Jill for that.
That a hundred and thirty, I would have to go back and check. I'm not sure about that.
Uh, in clubhouse supplies. Now, some things that were moved, uh, past administration, when they split our budget up, a lot of the clubhouse supplies and operating expenses came under one line item, but we had to split those out. So I have, uh, things for the clubhouse that, that I need, club repair and club repair supplies. Uh, when you get down to merchandising, we spend, we spend, we make about seven, eight thousand dollars a year in club repair, just doing grips. And so club repair is, is big for us. Uh, cleaning supplies, kitchen supplies, driving range has to be operational, pro shop supplies, these all add up during the year, running events and keeping things running through the clubhouse. Uh, computer expenses are, I print computer scorecards for all the league play, uh, the Nick Center, the Wednesday seniors, the Saturday bullpen. They all get scorecards each week. And it's been pretty beneficial, the, the little things that we do on our scoreboards to help maintain play. So we're, we dress things up the best we can. Uh, general maintenance, uh, repairs and things to the clubhouse, uh, for just general operating, daily needs, weekly needs, monthly needs. As we get into working on the clubhouse, maybe some of those repairs would be shortened or less expensive. I'm not sure. Dues and membership, uh, that's my annual PGA dues and also the AGA handicapping system. If I could take a minute to explain that. We want each golfer out there to have a handicap and we don't do that in-house anymore. We farm that out to Alabama Golf Association, which is generally the, the people that keep, of your handicap. They require a twenty-five dollar fee. We simply collect that fee from our patrons and extend it to the AGA. And what they've provided is an online service that we haven't, we didn't have to do anything to. People can go online, post their scores, then check tournaments around the area, then check tournaments in the state. Their handicap is through the GEN system, the Golf Handicapping Index Network, and we don't have to do anything. They provided an online computer software service for us. There's really no charge. You can, Mr. Varell, I know you know from playing at Lakewood, you have your handicap through the GEN. And it's just kind of common for most, I would say eighty percent of the, ninety percent of the clubs in the area with AGA and GEN.
Yeah, just understand that is, that is paid, that we do charge for that.
Okay, so there's a seven thousand dollar expense, but we collect it and we pay it. So it's really zero. Now, we did have a line item a near years past. It was three or four thousand dollars we collected on handicap fee. We had to provide the service. We had to provide the online stuff. We don't have to provide that anymore. AGA does that. Uh, my driving range ball picker, range ball repairs, beverage cart, uh, a grip stand is a, we need for, for doing grips. These are some miscellaneous supplies and things that I expect or estimate that will be charging us to, to keep the operation outside on equipment. We, all we have is our range cart. It was bought two years ago, still in, in fine shape. It'll last us another five or six years with our mechanic keeping it running. So I don't need a range ball picker. I just need to keep gas, oil, tires and maintenance on it as it runs down. Uniform's pretty self explanatory. Uh, purchases, you can see what we have for two thousand and seventeen. I'm getting quotes on most of those items there. Uh, I was waiting on the baking oven to see what we were gonna do with the clubhouse. Outdoor service needs or umbrellas and tents and things, uh, sand bottles and things to keep the carts in good shape. Uh, furniture and decor for the clubhouse. Uh, we're holding off on that expenditure, seeing what was gonna happen with the clubhouse, what you all would like to do with that before I spent that. Uh, the driving range for two thousand eighteen, the ball dispenser machine is worn. It is in, it's kind of on its last legs. A new one will cost five thousand dollars. Uh, the range stands out is a nice presentation to have on the driving range. New ones, for the total of twenty-four that we need is thirty-six hundred dollars. Uh, display fixtures in the shop. When we reopen the golf shop to make sure we have the right way to display apparel, those are some of my requests for that. If we continue to go without doing any remodeling, I was requesting a tent. A new one is basically about fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's a forty by twenty, excuse me, sixty by forty. And it's a nice large tent and I need tables and chairs to go under those. Uh, so if we're long-term on doing the repairs, I'd like to request that'd be something to think about if we go ahead and move forward with the repairs and they're in ready by springtime next year. I spent probably six to seven thousand on renting tents for those last six or seven events for the year when we had to move out of the clubhouse. So if, if we don't get back in there, the tent would pay for itself. So that may be an item that we can scratch. Uh, commercial dishwasher is needed. If we do the nice things to have draft beer or provide some other meals and dishes, we do not have a dishwasher to wash. We're on paper plates. I'd like to see us move to, you know, don't have to be, uh, white tablecloth dinner, but we do need a dishwasher to clean. And, uh, we've been asking for that for a while, so it'd be nice to have. Any questions on those items? Uh, advertising and promotion, this is a big increase. I'm asking for seven thousand dollars more in needs for advertising. We've basically had six to seven thousand dollars over the last few years. Uh, I've been approached by, uh, running things on the Weather Channel and doing weather spots. That's where media spends a lot of their time on TV and radio is weather. You get pounded with the weather. You don't hear any more about sports. It's, they start with the weather, they go to the middle, they broadcast with the weather and they end with the weather. And I'd like, uh, to run with the Weather Channel, the people at Gulf Shores, the people in the area looking at the weather before they come out and play golf. I think it's a good place to spend some of our dollars. Uh, I spend very little in, in radio, almost zero in print. The golf course crosswalk and pedestrian signage, I've put that, that may be in the wrong department there, but the civic association and the residents that live at Quail Creek have asked me to put signs up where people walk their dogs into the golf course. We have golf carts that children are driving. They cross, they, they trespass. We have people that fish all the time that I have to run off. We constantly have runners and joggers in the morning. We'll be ready to start a tournament and I gotta run three ladies off because they're jogging down the middle of the fairway. And we need signage to tell them that they cannot trespass at Quail Creek. Uh, you know, it's, it, if we do not do something about it, put some nice signage up there, some that's appropriate. It's gonna cost some money to put it up at the crosswalks and entrances where cart paths cross on, uh, from, uh, as you know, from like fifteen to sixteen, Jack, where they can enter and get in and off the golf course. There's people out there all the time, kids riding around, uh, fishing and so on and so forth. We need signage to stop them. I'd hate to go to fencing. It may be something we have to think about if we have to fence those crosswalks and it, that would just, I think it'll detract if we have to put up gates and locks and things like that. So I'd like to start with signage. They've been asking for it. And so that's a line item that we need to, I think we need to do a nice job of putting nice signage out there. Uh, supplies for the grill, general operations. We have a towel and cleaning surface cleans the mats in the kitchen for the grease and then, and, uh, just some things to make the grill as nice as we can. Pro shop sales, I've itemized each of our sales. Just so you could see, I use this as my buying guide to buy merchandise during the year. The percentages are out to the side. You can see what we do on balls and gloves and putters and things that we sell. This way we can track our sales and this gives me my guide to stay within, in my budget for the year. Even with the shutdown from the clubhouse moving over to the grill, I, I think you're gonna see our numbers are still pretty good. Uh, we've sold a lot of golf balls and, uh, I, I think sales are still gonna be up. Uh, custom pro shop sales, what those are is when they win money on the books, people may have a, a particular bag or clubs they wanna order shoes. And we book sales off into custom because, uh, there's just a lot of people that custom order or special order something, bag with their name or a special pair of shoes. And so that's why that was split apart. It still adds to our sales, but it was a way to keep, uh, custom sales different from retail sales, because we do have a lot of custom orders. So with your help, I like the plan with the clubhouse and the fact that we'll, we can look towards sharing that with the patrons out there. I, I have a lot of questions from time to time. What are they doing about the clubhouse? What's the council say? What's the mayor say? Where are we headed? And I think, uh, I'm, I'm really glad to hear you all talk about that and we can move forward and be positive and, yeah. And then the, the one line item, I, I bring this up from time to time, that's not on your budget sheet. You will not see it. How much did FIF make? How much did Kiwanis Club make? How much did the charity organizations that came to Quail Creek go away with helping those children? Boys and girls clubs is talking to us about their tournament. Uh, Kiwanis Club, Lions Club, they all benefit from us. Church groups, First Baptist Church has an outing. So, uh, University of Southern Mississippi gave about six thousand dollars back to their alumni association after their event this year. So where, you know, what are we doing as an impact on the community and what Quail Creek's providing? That, I, I can't tell you what that number is, but it's gotta be very helpful. So I.
Great point.
I'd like to see us continue, uh, in that direction.
Questions for Bobby, real quick, counsel? We've still got a lot to get through today.
Thank you for your time.
I, I have a question for Jill. Jill, uh, when I look at, for instance, the GEN expenses of uh, seven thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars that's in here, did you put an income in there to offset that expense?
I'm working on income.
Okay, so because it's not fair to Bobby, when I look at the total increase of a hundred and twenty-seven, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, you know, that's not really a true increase at all. That's.
That is new. I mean, that just happened this past year.
I don't even know if I'd put that, I, I don't even know if you could, you can't even put that in a budget as an expense, because it's not truly an expense.
Correct. But if, if Ms. Dever needs to record income and outgoing money, that's, she'd have to.
Yeah, as long as it's in the revenue.
Yeah, of course.
So that's something that's seven, if that was in there, that's seven out of one twenty-seven, because I, I'll be honest with you, uh, Bobby, it's about seventeen percent increase, uh, in the budget. But, but I do realize that, you know, all of your merchandise is, are things that are gonna be sold and you, uh, also.
But also, we, we anticipate a six percent increase on our retail markup this year and we average about thirty percent.
Okay, 'cause we're gonna give you authority to raise things, so we don't get the phone calls.
Okay.
And the, uh, and the other thing I was gonna point out was I noticed you had quite a bump in your, uh, food items, I believe. I see that.
Well, in the budget, I was able to hire a full-time snack bar person and another part-time person.
Yeah, so food and beer and wine, so hopefully all those things will, will come back in terms of revenue too. So I do see that.
That's correct. We have farmed out a lot of our food to a lot of the delis in the area and Piggly Wiggly, uh, Greers, uh, and some of our local restaurants have had to step up and do our meals because the kitchen staff has been so low, I haven't been able to provide it. So
So yes, the expenses will go up, but also will the revenue will too.
It'll be interesting. To, to be fair to you, it'd be nice to see your income projections next to your expense projections before, you know. You know, you look at this and you say, oh, 17% increase in spending. Well, we gotta slash something somewhere, but if your, you know, if your income shows a 20% increase, then...
And Ms. Lynn and I have worked on a revenue increase that we'll present at another meeting.
And, and things like, going back to the food items, if, if you're trending lower on sales, you just won't purchase as much. So those, those expenses would, we hope that doesn't happen, but they would go down.
Correct.
All right. Any questions for Bobby?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bobby. We need, need to get to the public works presentation, but before we do, I had a couple of things while we're in the work session, wanna talk to. We're just gonna carry the work session on to the agenda meeting. You know, our, our agenda consists of a lot of purchases tonight, which means Dan Ames is gonna be up in front of us the whole time, probably. So I don't think that, and, and all these are, but most, everything is budgeted. So I think that we can push back the agenda meeting unless somebody has something real specific they wanna talk about on the agenda. We'll, we'll get to that in a little bit. I wanted to bring up a couple of things real quick. And one of them was the Baldwin County sewer. Richard, you wanna come up here for this, maybe, in fairness to you? We had, council, we had gone into executive session to discuss what terms we would propose to Baldwin County Sewer to renew the lease of our lines to treat the sewer, sewages that's collected by their collection system, and then it's pumped to our plant for treatment. And I believe that we were all in agreement on what the terms of that should be. And when the attorneys drew up the agreement, I think the only difference, there were a couple of things that I saw. One was I didn't see an escalating cost clause, which I think that we had put in there. Do you all remember that? And you don't have to use a number if you don't want, but because it's a contractual thing. But do you recall an increasing cost? It was a dollar or two per unit, per, you know, every year or every three years or something like that? Marcus or Tuck, do either of you have those notes on that? Because we, we put that in there.
I have notes, and I do have a note about an escalating clause, but I didn't know an amount or what was, what specific it should say. I don't think we said it.
Yeah, so, well, I thought we had in there by, in principle. So council, if anybody has a notes on that, and I, I looked in my notes.
CPI, but I don't, it was just a suggestion.
I thought it was a fixed amount, but, but I could be wrong. And then the second thing that was a, that we need to resolve to move this forward was that the mayor had proposed capping the number of subscribers to 50 people. We had in there a clause, without talking about dollars, that we would be, to be paid a tap fee for any new customers, which I thought the premise was that we would pay for any expansion of our collection system if that meant improvements to our lift stations, our additional lift stations, or anything else. We don't have any problem with capacity at our treatment plant. We're at half capacity, so if we picked up 5,000 customers, we can, we can handle it. So, and we're in the business of selling utilities, so I was a little surprised that we would want to put a limit on the number of customers. And in that we were gonna collect tap fees, I thought that we would be able to expand on our system. So Mr. Peterson, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to, to tell us if you think that it's wise to limit the number of subscribers and why. And now I want to hear from the council because we need to move this forward as well.
Well, I do know we're still in the assessment of the sewer system, and right now, just based on the preliminary discussion I had with the folks at GMC, we're, we're pretty close to being at capacity throughout the system from the stuff that comes in from, to South Section and the sewer that comes into the doghouse on Greenell Road. We're, if not at, maybe close to being over capacity.
Does this collection system that would be leased to them include either one of those points?
South Section.
South Section does?
And, you know, my opinion is that if we don't own it, which we did own it 10 years ago, or almost 10 years ago. And if we don't own it now, I don't know what advantage we have to, to convey their waste and treat it.
Well, the advantage is, is that we don't own it, and we don't have to ma, in my opinion, we don't have to maintain it because they own it. And all we're doing is treating the sewage, and, and if we were to charge exactly what we're charging those customers anyway, I mean, we're in, are we losing money on treating sewage?
We're pumping the sewer three times, which adds wear and tear to those facilities. And we're short on capacity from the preliminary numbers I'm getting from the assessment. If we don't limit the growth, then, I mean...
But the growth could pay for our infrastructure as well. I mean, could it not? Could we not, if we get those tap fees, then they're not cheap. Would that not pay for the infrastructure? Might even help a part of our other issues.
It would help. If we don't own it, and if we don't have control over it, I don't see an advantage to having it hooked to our system. We, we don't have any way to model anything beyond what we have anyway. And if we can't model what they're doing, I don't...
Are we expecting an explosive? We have about 100 customers right now, or they have 100 customers, which they're paying us a fixed amount per month for. $15 a month.
Per customer.
Per customer. And, and then we would, we've, given the attorney's numbers that we feel are fair. I don't know. I, I just don't see it. It seems to me like we're making money if we, if we keep them. Does anybody else see it? What do you guys think?
Not a $15 a month. It's an insult to our existing customers.
The new terms, which I'm not stating right now.
Right. I guess my, my thought would be, if, do we have an agreement in place, gentleman's agreement or anything, that is, if we continue to let them add on to that line as far as new customers, that they won't come over or under the Fish River?
181 is the demarcation line, or they're on the east side of 181, we're on the west side, I think. And that may be something Tuck can answer.
That's the concern I've been hearing from, from citizens, is that they're, they're just worried about the environmental impact if they were to either go over or under Fish River to pull that back into their treatment facility.
Right. Which is a reason I thought we should buy it back.
Well, I mean, you and I have discussed this. We, we talk about buying it back all we want. They ain't selling it. It's just that simple. It ain't gonna get sold.
Well, I know.
So if you can't buy something, it's the guy doesn't wanna sell it to you.
Right.
So to me, you know, to argue, well, we need to buy it, that's a moot point because they're not gonna sell it to us. That's been reiterated to me at least 50 times.
Right. And I would suggest the revenue we would make on it isn't worth the effort we would have to have to treat and transmit that sewer from that system.
Even if the rate was increased?
Yeah, I mean, it's just not that much money.
Well, then why don't we get out of the sewer business altogether? I mean, we're, we're in the sewer business making money now, and we've certainly, we have customers that we pump sewage that far. Are we losing money on those customers that are on the outline areas if, you know?
But that's paying for the service, not just the treatment, right?
But we would be charging Baldwin County Sewer, we're charging our existing customers. So if we're, if we are selling the sewer services to our existing customers, and then we're losing money, then we need to get out of the business. And I don't think we're losing money.
On the other side is, if, if they accept the program, we're not, we're, we're getting the same amount of money, basically. And, but we're not doing any repairs or any taps or anything else that we're collecting money for. We don't fix or repair the lines.
If they agree to the connection figure talking about.
Well, they'd have to, that's the point, they'd have to read all this. That's, again, that's what we discussed. And the point of it is, we're actually getting, you know, technically, we're getting more money because we don't have to service the lines. We just, all we're doing is transporting and treating. Whereas the lines that we do own, we have to do the connections, we have to maintain the lines, we have to fix everything and do everything. So to me, the other item is, that system's been existence for 10 years, and we've got exactly 100 customers. So that's without a tap fee. Now we're gonna add a tap fee, and everybody seems concerned that, oh, they're gonna just mop up and just come on with us. I mean, I don't see it.
I don't see the system growing that much, right.
My only point is that... So I don't, this added, this put the deal for 50 customers, you know, that's half of what we've got over a 10-year period with no tap fee. I just don't, I don't see it. I don't even see a reason to have that with, you know, with what the stipulation for the contract is gonna have.
Whatever the end game's gonna be, I mean, what's gonna happen after the term of this particular agreement?
I don't know. No, no, he's talking about the terms of the new agreement. They accepted it.
I would say give them an agreement long enough for them to hook up with the system and treat their own sewer. I don't have a problem with that. But I wouldn't wanna extend it into another 10-year agreement.
May I, Marcus or Tuck, can I state what we, the terms were as far as length of contract? Do you think that's okay?
I think it is, but when, when we state it, they're gonna know what it is because it's gonna be...
Well, we're gonna give, present it to them. Either we're gonna present it to them or we're not. I believe that we had talked about seven-year term.
Right.
So if you're looking at what kind of growth we're gonna have in seven years, I don't know if it's gonna be, you know, 1,000 customers.
What happens at the end of the seven-year term? Do we go through this again?
Might.
I mean, shouldn't we look?
But we oughta have all of our issues resolved by, resolved by them.
Well, we were talking about prioritizing our issues. I don't know that if this system's gonna be taken away from us, and we're not gonna have to deal with any of it, the priorities may change where we don't have to do anything with that part of the system.
For, for...
This may change those priorities, is what I'm saying.
For every 100 new customers, the tap fee is what, $1,800, $1,500?
It's $2,800.
$2,800. So for every 100, what's that, $28,000? $280,000? $280,000? That'd go a long way towards fixing our collection issues way out there. So that's why I think it's a non-issue. For every 100 customers, we've got a quarter of a million dollars to fix the issues.
And you're, you're assuming they're gonna agree to that?
Well, yeah, and if they don't...
Well, if they don't, it's a whole discussion, a moot point.
Right.
They'll be hooking up to their line, and every, you know, we don't have to worry about anything.
Have you seen the term? Maybe you'd help if we, if we gave you the terms because...
Yeah, I understand.
We, he and I have discussed them.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem going in with that. I just think that if, seven years from now, we're gonna be having the same discussion, and I don't know what our system's gonna be like at that time. I don't know what our growth projections are gonna be south of there because what we're talking about doing affects everything that grows south from South Section, which is Point Clear and everything around County Road 1, and then the things that, from Newton and Saraceno's and that area coming in the same system.
To me, the more dependent they become on us for us to treat their sewage, the more of an upper hand we have in seven years to negotiate whether they wanna sell us the system then and say, well, we'll build your own now. Now you've gotta serve 500 customers instead of 100. They got a lot bigger problem, you know. I, I, I think it benefits us as, as we add on more customers, especially if we get the, the impact fees. Anybody see the numbers differently than that?
The other thing I'm trying to figure out, if, if you wanna buy the system, now we deal with it.
I'm sorry?
I said, if you wanna buy the system, and we, and let's assume they sold it to us. Let's assume they gave it to them. Now the system is ours, and we do have to deal with it. So we are, we have the same issues and the same problems, charge the same exact amount of money as we would anybody else outside of the city limits. So I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not following why, what the problem is of providing sewer to the Fairhope side of Fish River. Because that's in essence what the total goal is, no matter what.
Well, buying the system prevents any future connection they would have to make, and you're concerned about them crossing Fish River, right?
Well, it's one concern, but that's not a concern.
If they get into the, they have 500 customers.
I'm concerned with them coming over here and taking our customers, whereas your, it looks like your argument is you don't want any more customers out there because it costs too much money to bring it here. And see, I disagree with that.
No, if I'm buying it back, I don't have to worry about what customers I have over here.
If we buy it back, we still got the same capacity issues.
We got more problems than the same capacity issues you had that you were...
I think we have the same problem.
Correct. So I mean...
The problem's the same, only we own the whole thing.
Well, that's why I'm saying this way's better in the fact, for the reason, the fact that we don't have to deal with the system. All we gotta do is transport here. It's, it doesn't cost us as much money to own, if we don't own the line, and all we do is transport, but we're making the same amount of money. And so obviously, we gotta higher profit margin in that sewer. Unless I'm looking at something wrong. I don't have to fix that line. I don't have to tap that line. I don't have to deal with the lines at all.
I know, but you do have to worry about everything that comes from it.
I would, if I owned it, I would anyway.
That's right.
To me, it's a better deal. That's what I'm getting at. This is a better deal.
Well, what happens seven years from now?
It's still a better deal.
I think we strike a deal, and within the next seven years, we'll have the sewer situation figured out in the City of Fairhope and...
I don't... See, but that's optimistic.
Well, if we don't grow, it won't be a problem. When we grow, we can emphasize the infrastructure improvements on that part of town because we definitely have the, the revenue stream to, to look at it. I don't think we're losing money on it. Counsel, are we ready to even move forward on this? Is anybody, have you got, have you got any concrete thoughts?
My thoughts are the same as what we discussed in the, in the meeting. I have, I, I don't see where, I mean, I just seem to think it's a better deal under these conditions. If they take, they don't take, all this...
They may not. It may all be a moot point. They may not accept our terms. I mean, that's Councilman Brown, Councilman Conack.
I think we're trying to set up a made-up Baldwin County sewer. Is that still what we wanna do?
I think we need to move forward with the terms that we're ready to present.
Once we vote on it, that's what, then you got the terms set in concrete, you take it or you don't.
Well, you just tell them. All we need to do is agree in principle to move forward, and, and we can tell the attorney to write the terms up because we're not accepting a contract right now. We're just proposing one. That doesn't ever have to...
Yeah, well, I apologize. I just feel like that if, if we don't own it, we shouldn't be servicing it. It's just my opinion.
Okay.
And I agree with Richard that I would like for us to be able to buy it, but if they're not gonna sell it, then the next option would be to move forward with some kind of proposal. I, I'd rather them not come over the river or under the river to, to tap into that, to take it back to, to their treatment facility.
But they wouldn't have a need to.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I would rather either us buy it would be my first option, or they're not willing to sell it, which you're saying they're not. Then my second option would be to propose that we treat it.
Have we approached them with buying it back?
I've thrown out Hughes' numbers.
Huh?
I've thrown out Hughes' numbers. The answer is no. As a matter of fact, if you want me to quote it, it's not no but hell no.
Well, then they need to hook up to it.
Again, I understand that, but that's, that's putting your motion in front of this. To me, this is a better deal because of the fact that we get the same amount of money and not have to deal with the same amount of problems.
I don't, I don't...
It's just, to me, it's a no-brainer.
I, I don't have any problem putting, putting a limit of customers on it because, for two reasons. Number one, I don't think it's gonna matter because we've had 100 total in 10 years. I don't know that, and we're gonna increase the price and include a tap fee. I don't see that them, I don't see us exceeding that 50 anyway. But at the same time, we're still trying to get our own sewage infrastructure in place. Maybe it's good to have some limit on there so that we are taking on additional people and making some more money. We're not overextending what you're saying is a station that's already exceeding or reaching its capacity.
My, my point on that was, once again, was that the, the more new customers you get, the more money you're gonna generate to, to put into infrastructure.
Well, that's right, and so maybe at the end of seven years, we don't need a limit.
And I will say, the, the one group that y'all are leaving out of your discussion is the customer. Has anybody talked to the customers to see what they've...
I have talked to some of them. They're highly upset that the City of Fairhope is considering pulling out of that. Highly upset has been my feedback. There's one sitting in this room right now that's highly upset about it, and they're an employee of the City of Fairhope, and they are livid.
We're not gonna ask you to raise your hand.
They're livid, that's what.
There's even the talk of us, us pulling out of there. They feel like that, remember mine, I'm...
And why shouldn't that motivate Baldwin County Sewer to sell it to us? If they're not able to take care of it?
Brother, you gotta take that up with them. I can't, I can't, there's no way we can say, why they, you know, why...
We giving them 10 years at $15 a month?
Why don't people do a lot of things?
And they hadn't hooked up to it yet.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have a consensus. I don't have a unanimous consensus, but we, are we gonna, are we gonna kick the can down the road? can down the road again? Are we going to go into another executive session?
The way we had it last time...
I'm trying to bring this to a head.
I put a draft letter out that had terms, and then there were a couple of comments. One comment was to limit the number, which we're talking about here tonight, and the other comment was to add in a annual adjustment or increase. And, but the, and so, that's where it is.
Well, that was unanimous in the executive session. It was just left out of that letter.
Okay. All right, so that goes in, but I'll need to get some specifics.
Be defined.
See, the other question...
And the other thing is, do we want to have a limit or not? I mean, whatever y'all say is what we can put in the letter.
Well, I don't think you can limit anything, but I, what I...
See, that's what I was going to get at. The, the law states that if you have a, if you're on a septic tank and you have accessibility to sewer, you ha, and you have to repair that septic tank, they're not going to allow you to repair that septic tank. You have to hook up.
Is that the law or is that just the City of Fairhope ordinance?
That's the law. No, that's the law. That's EPA law. And everywhere I've ever dealt with, you cannot fix the line if you have access, access to a city, to a treatment.
I thought that might have just been a local ordinance. I got Mr. Cortina shaking his head back there.
The city has an ordinance, if you're in the corporate limits and sewer is available and your septic tank fails, you have to tie the sewer. That does not apply in Baldwin County because we have the county health department issue secondary tan, or secondary septic or repair permits for, for them to set, set their tanks. And we can't enforce, we cannot make somebody tie on to a sewer line in the county.
You say we, Fairhope can.
The city cannot, and the county, the, the health department will issue permits for new septic tanks.
They sure did issue it to me. In Fish River.
I know, I've run into it on scenic 98 and I've run into it out, you know, east of...
Well, I've just gone by experience. They didn't do it to me.
Yeah, lucky.
They told me, quick, hook up.
Okay. One, one more time through this. Jay, what's your final plan, sir?
I'm okay with the letter that Tutt sent, with those terms.
With the limit of 50?
I'm okay with the limit of 50.
Is that per year or is that for the term?
That's for the term.
Okay.
Let me just ask you a question, Jay. If it gets to 50 hypothetically, in four years and three people more, are you going to, we're going to say no or...
Well, well, I think what that would do is if we, if we put in the contract 50, Baldwin County Sewer is going to want to go over that if it can, I would imagine. So that would give us, us the option maybe of saying, we can alter the terms and take more than 50 if we've got our ducks in a row here and our sewer capacity is taken care of. But it limits them that they can't go over that if we're not...
How are we going to take them? Because we don't have a collection system there. It's theirs.
No, I'm saying we, we'll allow them to tap in more than 50.
Oh, okay. At that time?
If we, if we are able to, if we think we can handle it, if we are able. That's my thought.
I'm not, how is you allow them to take on 50 if we only allow 50?
Well, what I'm saying is, is that if, if we put in the contract 50, that gives us the discretion to not take any more than 50 if we don't want to. If we want to alter the terms by saying, all right, now we've got our sewer, sewer capacity up to snuff, up where we want it to be, we can say, all right, guys, you want to bring in more than 50. We're, we're at the 50 capacity. We want to take on more than 50. We're okay with that then. I mean, that's my thought.
Just basically saying, it buys us time to think what we want to do.
That's right.
What happens if somebody proposes a 75 lot subdivision out there? It could be the very first thing that, that you never know.
True, I feel it's a moot point because, oh, you know, what we've got out here now and no tap fee, and then you're going to have a tap fee.
I'm with you. I think it's probably a moot issue, but I don't know, I don't know why you don't...
Even if it does, if they, if it comes to a pass that we, we're ready to accept more, we can change it anytime you want. It's not set in concrete.
Yeah, but if we put no limit and they sign the contract, then they can put whatever they want and we can't change it. I think putting some limit in there gives us some discretion in what we want to take and what we're comfortable with. Leaving an open ended, they can do what they want because they have total authority for seven years to hook up as many as they want as long as it pays for it. We're not going to be ready for that.
When you get to 50 and House Number 51 moves along, he can put a septic tank in, then somebody puts in a subdivision, they can put all the septic tanks in.
We'll fight off Eric's right or I'm right.
Eric's right. You're in the county, you can put a septic tank in.
Okay. No, no, not, even though you're accessible to sewer.
Would you consider a different number?
A higher number? That's what Eric's saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
I'm saying you could probably consider a shorter term.
Once you've got a line there that you can hook up to, that's what you got to...
About five years and 100.
I, I like owning the system.
And try, and try to work out...
You guys, this huge number he threw out, that's what I'm still thinking about.
We were talking hypothetically at the time. Well, let's just say this. How about this?
What?
No, I'm just, I'm saying...
You're hypothetically, now you're hypothetical and you're hypothetical.
If we feel more comfortable at five years and 100, I'm fine with that too.
I don't know that they'll go for it. I think we might be putting something out there they're just going to reject.
Well, the point of it is it treats everybody fairly.
Yeah.
And that's, that was also my main point. And actually, I got to give Matt McDonald, he's the one that came up with that idea. And he was absolutely correct. But you got to treat everybody fairly for what we're providing.
You got a, been...
You know, seven years, 50. I'm fine with that.
That number's so low. That's nothing. That's just nothing. That's just a low number. Jimmy?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'd say five and 100 and I'd, I'd try to buy it, but if they're not going to sell it, then let's just get something extended so we can move on and not have them cross over the river.
Y'all may be better negotiators, but you're able, you can go approach them anytime you want during this contract, see if they'll sell to you. Anytime you want.
I don't take Richard's advice and go lower, but I, I don't, I think that the number 50 is low. I dig that.
Five and 100, that cuts the years down, doubles the number.
That's fine with me.
I don't, the, the point is just having a number there.
Yeah, it's just a number. It might just come right back in our face in a Y too, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it might not matter at all.
But if they're going to grow that much, then they'd want to hook up to it, right?
I think the more they grow, the more they're going to be dependent on us. Better for us. That's what I think. That's why I'm worried about the limiting number.
They get better for us.
I think 599 sounds better.
What do you think? What do you, what's the final word?
599, five years, 99 people. It's better than 600.
I've got four for five and 100.
At this point, I don't care. I think just giving us some discretion over an unlimited amount in the timeframe.
I'll find that escalating clause too. Because there was an escalating clause.
Yeah, I need to get that.
It was something, a dollar every three years or a dollar, something like that for two years.
So is it five, 100 or seven?
Five, 100.